Good evening, everyone. We are ready to start the board meeting. We're on air. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us. Good evening. The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board meeting is called to order at 6 o'clock PM on March 21st, 2023. I'm hearing an echo. The regular business meeting of the Oseo School Board is being conducted in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. I'm hearing an echo.
Sure he's working on it.
Okay, thank you. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left and your right, are Director Sarah Mitchell, Director Thomas Brooks, Director Tanya Simon, sorry, I shouldn't read off of this, myself, Jackie Moscata-Jones, Director Heather Douglas, and Director Tamara Grady. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Cory McIntyre and our Student School Board Representatives. Today, representing Park Center School is Moata Kamra. Welcome. And have a blessed Ramadan. That starts tomorrow, correct? Or Thursday, thank you very much. Priya Moa from 279 Online. And Linnea could not make it tonight. Timur Yusinov from Maple Grove Senior is here. Thank you. Cabinet members, Tim Palmitier, Kelly Parpart, Brian Bass, and John Morsted are also present, and other cabinet members will come to the boardroom as needed for agenda items. Those of you who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Mitchell, will you lead us today? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board members, are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as is?
So moved.
Moved by Heather Douglas, second.
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Our next standing agenda item is recognitions. Tonight, we'll be recognizing the 2023 state champions Maple Grove Senior High School Jazz Dance Team. All right. Board members, Superintendent McIntyre and Students Board Representatives, will you please join me in front of the board dais? And coaches, Jill Lestie and Stacy Markwart, please step up to the speaker's podium to introduce your team, which you already did.
We're gonna be joining you down here.
Well, hi, everyone. My name is Stacy Markwart, and this is Jill Lestie. We are the co-head coaches of the Maple Grove Dance Team. And on behalf of our coaching staff, including all of our assistant coaches who could not be here this evening, we want to say thank you so much for inviting us to celebrate these remarkable athletes and their accomplishments. Just over a month ago, our Maple Grove Varsity Jazz Team earned our eighth state dance team championship. This award was a culmination of a successful season, where they also earned the team's 22nd consecutive conference championship and this year's section jazz championship. As coaches, we've said that this team was special since day one of practice, as they demonstrated a unified commitment to setting and achieving common goals, all through a common love for this sport and this team. They showed up for each and every practice and performance consistently throughout the season, leading by example, no matter their age or their tenure on the team. And they managed to have a lot of fun along the way. They pushed boundaries, they made history, and they lived up to their full potential in creating a routine that will be memorable in our sport for a very, very, very long time because of its artistic and athletic excellence. As coaches, we are so proud of them for representing our sport, team, school, and this community so well. And again, we're thrilled to be here this evening to celebrate them. Thank you for having us. I'd like to recognize Ashley Alden, Senior Captain, Toria Johnson, who is not able to be here, Teagan Wilson, Ivan Beto, not here either, Lexi, not here, Olivia Jerabek, also captain, Charlie Weber, captain, unable to be here, Aubrey Brown, Avery Hanscom, Olivia Nagel, Ava Poppen, unable to be here, Haley Ritter, not able to be here, Amy Belcese, Carly Janiky, Gianna Parker, Alyssa Springer, Atiya Leacock, and then us. Again, thank you so much. Please give these athletes a hand.
Okay, team, you're up front. Lots of big smiles. Okay, that was fun. Our next agenda item is Student School Board Representative Reports. Follow that, my friends. Priya, will you please share your report?
Of course. Hello, my name is Priya. I am the Student Board Representative for the 279 Online School. So we have finally entered into our final and new semester of the year. As the snow is clearing up, of course, we are getting ready for spring break.
We, yeah, we can't hear you. We're just gonna wait for a minute for people to take their seats, and then maybe we'll shut the doors.
Yeah.
People are gonna be talking in the hall. It's hard to know that it goes so much in here. Thanks, Robyn, for facilitating that.
I think it is.
I appreciate that. Now you have a whole bunch of teachers to support you in your report.
Thank you all. Hello, my name is Priya. I am the Student Board Representative for the 279 Online School. We have finally entered into our new and final semester of the year. As the snow is clearing up, students are very excited for spring break. Recently, we have been doing a fun activity at the 279 Online School. It is called Advisory Week Challenge. And this is the week where teachers and scholars are both, um, both having fun in activities where we are able to play games and do puzzles. We also recently had a celebration for the 279 Online Elementary Kids. We love them. Families were able to come together and do many fun activities. And thanks to the staff who prepared that. Thank you so much. That's all I have for today.
Thanks, Priya. Timur, will you please share your report?
Yeah, hello, my name is Timur Yusinov, and I am the Representative for Maple Grove Senior High. So, so far, we've gone through around two whole entire trimesters of our school year, 2022, 2023. And many of us seniors, such as I, we've gotten a lot of our reports and confirmations for our colleges, but many of us still wait for April 1st, where we get our final decisions, and we see all of our paths that we can take. And it's a pretty anxious time period. But it's not just seniors. Juniors are also awaiting to see what's in store for them for the next year. We have the free ACT that our school is providing around April 19th. So I just want to say good luck studying to everyone who still has to take that this upcoming spring. It's a very difficult time. And in February, our school's orchestra had a great opportunity to attend a field trip to Chicago for around five days. I got to be a part of it, and it was a very amazing opportunity for everyone to be able to explore and be in new places outside of Minnesota as a group. We got to tour, watch, and participate in numerous activities, such as watching Les Mis, the Chicago Symphony Orchestra, and we even had a private clinician analyze our orchestra from Northwestern University. It was truly an amazing experience for all of us, and I think it'll be something I'll remember for a very long time. Band themselves also won their own trip for NDSU, where they also got to perform and get their skills analyzed and their music developed on by a private clinician as well. Our hockey team went to the state competition at the Xcel Energy Center. And while Maple Grove did lose, it allowed a lot of us students to go out of our way to support our team and create a sense of pride while watching us out on the rink. In a different light, as you have all probably just seen just now, our Maple Grove Jazz Dance Team took home first place in the state tournament for the first time since 2015. And it just comes to show that Maple Grove is a thriving place for lots of opportunities for many students, not just in sports, but in arts, and that we can accomplish great goals. Crimson Robotics themselves went to Duluth a few weeks ago, and while the competition revealed a few obvious quirks about the robot, such as smoking rot motors and the pivot completely not working for malicious and omnipotent reasons, but tomorrow is going to be a new day and a new tournament to conquer. And it's going to be at Iowa, and we still don't know if the robot will fully work. Maybe it'll work better, hopefully, but it's something we can definitely find out, and you can check to see at the live recording that's gonna be taking place throughout the next few days. And our Maple Grove speech season also ended this last Saturday, and we have sectionals coming up this Thursday to see which one of us will end up competing at state. Once again, Maple Grove has a phenomenal speech team, and hopes are up to see who can succeed and move on. And that's all I have for today.
Thanks, Timur. Moata, will you please share your report?
Bonjour, everyone. I'm just trying to impress my French teacher that's over there.
It was good! It was good! Extra credit, extra credit.
First and foremost, I want to talk about our school's recent musical. It was about the famous character, I think you guys all know it, SpongeBob and his crew in The Bikini Bottom. It was highly successful, as we had the middle school come in and watch, and the play show was being shown several nights, and it was an overwhelming response from my friends that did the musical, because they were pretty occupied with it. But overall, it was really good, and it was a true...
Hold on, let me get the word.
It was a true showcase of how like the community and like the scholars of both BMS and Park Center could come together and enjoy the talents of our high schoolers. Also, I want to share that it is the beginning of a new trimester, and I myself started participating in unified classes, where we have some students who are, need more help with stuff, come in with students that like being leaders, come in and work together, and we either cook, I mean, the cooking one. And late, last week, we made Shamrock Shakes, which were pretty good, and I look pretty, I look pretty forward to working more in that class, which is a new learning experience, but I think I can hold it. In addition, I want to talk about our future plans that our AD has taken with our locker rooms. For the next school year, we are getting rid of some of our lockers that weren't being used anymore and putting it into better use, as we're gonna have like a homework spot and some places where we're gonna go over film, rather than just like doing it in the normal locker room, which is pretty good, because now we're just taking care of space that wasn't being used. And lastly, it's been a stressful week for me, but lastly, last week, our state, I mean, our basketball team beat Oseo in the section championships, which led us to a free trip today and skipped school for a little bit at the Target Center, which was pretty exciting as we beat Andover, I think it was like 92 to 69. We beat them by 20 points, which is pretty good, because I was pretty nervous about it, because last year we played them, and they gave us a run for our money. But thank you, guys, for coming in, and yeah, thank you for listening. Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I see you, Ms. Coorsby. She was my, um, elementary ESP, yeah.
The student representatives review the board meeting packet in advance and are prepared to answer questions from board members on the issues that are on the agenda to seek student input related to those items. Board members, do you have any agenda items you'd like student input? I have something. Tonight, we get to approve Dr. Hile's contract for being the next superintendent of Oseo Area Schools. Cory who? Just kidding. Just kidding. He's here until June 30th. Don't kick him out. Did any of you have the opportunity to meet her when she was interviewing? Or have you seen anything from her? Do you have any thoughts or opinions, or?
I got to meet her, but didn't get to meet her, because it was a lot of people that went to the conference. But what, like, from what I've heard, that she's pretty respected in the district that she currently is controlling. And I do look, I am definitely gonna miss you, because he was so nice to us. I was so nervous to like do this, but he showed us that, oh, don't be afraid of me. It's okay. So, yeah, I'm definitely gonna miss him, but I do want to see what she can bring to the table as well.
I didn't get the chance to meet her, sadly, but as Moata said, I heard that she's really well-respected around here, but of course, I'm gonna miss you too. You made us feel like, you know, we're also respected by many people here with so much authority and power, so thank you so much.
You have a few more months with me yet.
Of course.
I also didn't really get to meet her, but I've heard a lot of great things about her, and it's nothing I can't really, I can really add that you two haven't added already, but I'm really excited to see what is gonna change and what new things are gonna be added. I think it's a great opportunity for this district, not to say anything against Cory McIntyre, but it's definitely exciting, and I can't wait to see what happens.
Thank you. Any other questions? Once again, you have provided awesome reports. Thank you so much for all the work that you do to come here. So our next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the board. I have three cards here. Just to remind everyone, I don't have my protocols in front of me, but that they are three minutes long, that they will be timed. And magically, they appeared. I'll call on each speaker based on the cards. You have three minutes. We don't take action on anything that is discussed, but we will make sure that it gets forwarded to the correct person for follow-up if necessary. There's pretty lengthy guidelines for public participation on the meeting materials table and on the school board section of the district website. I generally call speakers in the order of student, parent or guardian of a student, district employee, and then district residents. As it happens, they are all district employees, so picking the name out of the hat. Mary Newman, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary, and I have had the privilege of being the school nurse at Crestview for the last nine years. It's been a dream job for me to be able to be there, to see the smiles on the students' faces when they come and talk about their sad stories, or even just to tell me their exciting news, as they lost a tooth last night and want a tooth necklace. Due to the severe shortage of nurses this year, I've been being pulled to other health offices. I've seen firsthand the dedication of nurses in this district, ones who pour their heart, emotions, and their own finances in to make sure their office is the best that it can be. This year has been very hard on the nurses in this district, as many quality nurses have left, reasons as being unappreciated, overworked, and not being listened to. Some of my favorite things that I get to do as a nurse is screenings, whether it be vision, hearing, or dental. Nothing feels better than to see a student walking down the hallways with their glasses on, knowing that I've had to call the parents, call the clinic, make sure there's an appointment, make sure they go to their appointment, call the clinic again, get their glasses on, remind them to wear their glasses. All that is worth it, knowing that majority of students are not able to see the big E on the eye chart. For you, audience, it must be hard to comprehend and understand what the nurses do, but let me tell you firsthand that we are an important part of the District 279 wheel. Right now, we are doing our best to keep rolling, but to be honest, many are needing some TLC. We've been pushed without maintenance, our bolts are coming out, and some are ready to fall apart. Some have, and on the side of the road, forgotten by many. The last three years, the nurses have shied and carried the health offices through what was thrown at them, many times with no signs of appreciation. Everyone needs to be validated and shown that they matter. I encourage you to put yourself in some nursing shoes for a moment to see what it's, what you can see, students and staff that are in need of our tender-hearted medical knowledge.
Thank you, Mary. Becky, husband?
Thank you for the privilege of speaking to you again. I think this is like the third time in a week I've seen some of you. I feel like we're like old friends, and we can just sit down and talk. This week, along with teachers and other staff members, we have been working on ideas for safe Oseo schools. One of the major themes is being fully staffed. That's going to make us safer. I know you've heard it before. We're understaffed, staffed are tired, staff are disheartened. We're trying to go above and beyond. We're trying to fill in where the, where we can, the best that we can. But it's not enough, and it's not sustainable. And it's really hard to help kids continue to learn and to support what they're doing. It's so hard, and when they're dysregulated or having a bad day, it, it's not sometimes safe for other students in the room, too. So just an update, last time I was here, I told you our higher, what our higher rate for this year has been, and now I've updated, we've hired 167 ESPs, and we've had 96 resignations. That's a 57% rate. It's unsustainable, and 49% of those are probationary. We can't continue to do it and still do what we need to do. Without staff to teach and support, the mission of the district has no chance for success. I understand other districts are in the same boat, but we are, it's dire. I don't know how else to put it. It's hard to get people to work here when we get a wage increase and we're taking home less money. less money. It's hard to work here, um, when you have to tell people, you either have to have a two-family income or willing to work two jobs or more. That's the only way that you're gonna be able to work here as an ESP. We're just encouraging investment in your staff. Um, we need to attract new families to the district. We need to attract staff to the district. We need to keep students and staff safe. We need to do, we're doing the best we can, but we can always do better. Um, we just don't wanna see our buildings become warehouses where we're just warehousing kids and not doing what we're supposed to be doing with them. How are they going to achieve their dreams if we don't have the staff to help them to do that?
Thirty seconds remaining.
I talked to an ESP this week that says, "I need to go. I need to be done before. I hate my job." It's a hard thing to hear for people who are dedicated to kids, but that's how a lot of people are feeling. So, I appreciate you listening to me. I just think that you need to know where we're at and that we're willing to work with you for innovation. And just to point a personal privilege, go Pirates because once you work at Park Center, you are always a pirate, right, Kelly Parper?
Thanks, Becky. Our last speaker tonight is Shelley Silman.
I just have a list here of teachers' other duties as assigned. It's a little long, but Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me speak tonight. I appreciate it. I'm here on behalf of teachers, nurses, and Kid Stop. And to piggyback on Becky, as you well know, we're all exhausted. Cuz we wanna be teachers, but besides being teachers, there are a lot of other duties as assigned. I'm just gonna share some other duties as assigned. Um, input from our coworkers that only ninety-one out of, what, a hundred and, or sixteen-hundred teachers? Is that what we have? Sixteen-hundred? Only ninety-one responded and there's a lot there, but can you imagine if everybody shared their feelings on other duties as assigned? I'll just go ahead and go down the list. Writing due process paperwork for others. Bathroom monitor. Staff bathroom break substitute to give teachers a chance to go to the bathroom. Before and after-school bus duty every day. Designing curriculum. Making curriculum accessible to all students. Translating curriculum into digital format. Changing diapers. Completing due process paperwork during personal family time. Gathering ESY materials. Showing up every day to still be our best, even though we're not feeling supported, heard, or valued. Lunchroom dismissal. Committee meetings. PLTs. IEP meetings. Special education forms to complete. Parent contact log. MCA proctor training. MCA testing. Additional building committees. Um, chasing students down the hall who are running in the building who need to be, um, kept safe. Documenting. Billing. Subbing. Attending and supervising after-school activities. Games. Concerts. Attending graduation. Um, calling in blood pressure checks to a clinic. Helping students with, um, diabetic care. Policing correct passes. Cleaning bathrooms. Begging for donated clothes to help girls, um, have clean clothes in school if they have accidents. Uh, boxing up bathroom, or boxing up classrooms for remodel. Team meetings. Team collaboration. MCA training. SDAS meetings. NUA meetings. NUA observations.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm only on page one, folks. Writing care plans. Processing daily medications. Um, assessing for communicable diseases. Counselor. First aid giver. Advocate. Data analyst. De-escalator. Family communication. Social emotional builder. Nurse. Therapist. Psychologist. Tech support. Behavior specialist. Emailing. Doing my evaluations. Lifting students with disabilities. Diaper changer. Shoe tire. Bathroom cleaner. Hallway lunch cleaner-upper. Hallway monitor. Common sense teacher. Common courtesy teacher. Band-aid applier. Bloody-nose fixer. And the list goes on. The list of duties as assigned just goes on and on. Um, although I was unable to finish the list, I do have a copy for all of you, so you'll
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Cory, you could have the big one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Um, our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Mosketa-Jones, and good evening, board members. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share our points of pride, which we do every month. And by sharing our points of pride, we're taking some time to recognize and celebrate student, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare each and every scholar with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. So, tonight, as people are exiting, we will have members of our cabinet share some of the great work of the staff we have, our scholars and our community partnerships. So, uh, I'll start it off, I think, with Brian Bass to lead us off tonight. So, thank you, Brian.
There we go. In the area of achieving dreams, congratulations, well, I'm repeating, they were just here. Congratulations to the Maple Grove Senior High School Crimson Jazz Dance Team, who placed first in the two thousand twenty-three Class Three-A Jazz State Tournament. The team danced to the song Hurt by Johnny Cash. Senior captain Ashley Alden said, "When they announced our rank score of five, I was like, holy cow. We won with the perfect rank. And then, when they said it, I just started crying because I just couldn't believe Okay, Kelly's disappointed that she didn't get to, uh, to read this one. Uh, the Park Center's Senior High School Boys Basketball Team began their state tournament journey today, as mentioned earlier, with a ninety-two to seventy-two win over Andover, which might be in a neighboring district. In the class four A quarterfinals, the team was sent off this morning with a procession around school, joined by the band and cheerleaders. The team will play Eastview in the semifinals on Thursday at six PM at the Target Center. Good luck to the Pirates. Congratulations to the Maple Grove CI Adapted Floor Hockey Team, representing all of Osseo Area Schools, who won a six-five overtime thriller over Dakota United to take third place at the state tournament. The score was tied after three periods, and Getano Sanders scored the game winner for the Crimson in overtime. Magnet Schools of Merit Award. Two of, uh, two of Osseo Area Schools Magnet Schools received recognition for high-quality, innovative magnet programming at their schools. Weaver Lake Elementary, a science, math, and technology school, was awarded a two thousand twenty-three Merit School of Excellence Honor, which is the top merit award category. Weaver Lake is one of just five schools in the state to receive this recognition. Birch Grove Elementary School for the Arts received a two thousand twenty-three Merit School of Distinction Award, the second highest award of recognition. Birch Grove is one of just four schools in the state to receive this award. Scholars from Osseo Area Schools participate in a letter signing day to acknowledge the work put in as a student athlete and to mark the next chapter in their educational and athletic journeys. In February, over thirty scholars across the district committed to attending Division One or Division Two colleges and universities to play their sport. Each senior high school held activities to commemorate the occasion. Congratulations to these athletes on their achievements. Park Center again. Park Center Senior High School presented the SpongeBob Musical, which we heard, um, highlighted earlier, a lighthearted, lively, and colorful display of Park Center's fine arts talent that was enjoyable for people of all ages. The show starred Baron Penner as SpongeBob SquarePants, Hayu Abdul Malik as Patrick Starr, A.J. Lawson as Mr. Krabs, and Leslie McGastor as Sandy Cheeks. Grove Area Percussion, or GAP, placed first at their home show at Osseo Senior High School in February. Congratulations to these scholars on their great accomplishment and good luck on the rest of your season.
Birch Grove School for the Arts put on a charming musical, Honk Junior. Featuring students in grades one through five, the cast and crew spent two and a half months preparing for their performances. In the area of contributing to community, first graders in Jennifer Phillips' classroom at Fernbrook Elementary School donated books, reading buddies, and blankets to children at the Minnesota Children's Hospital as their service project, wanting to give back to students who were not able to be in school reading with their classmates. The class collected nearly one hundred books and several stuffed animals and made cards and blankets during their Valentine's Day party. Phillips said, "Watching my students prepare these gifts and light up every time they finished wrapping with something special. I have such a caring and compassionate group of scholars this year. This was the perfect chance to teach them about giving back to our community and helping those less fortunate than us." Osseo Area Schools hosted the two thousand twenty-three Winter Job Fair on February twenty-fifth at Edinburgh Elementary School. Community members were invited to learn about job opportunities in a variety of departments. Did you miss the job fair but are still interested in working for Osseo Area Schools? Then check out the careers page to view all our job openings and to apply. Thank you to everyone who helped to make the first Brooklyn Park District Two Seventy-Nine All Abilities Resource Fair a success. Over thirty vendors, including three internal vendors from Career-Based Vocational Assessment Training and Osseo Education Center, gathered at the Brooklyn Park Community Center to participate in the event, which was designed for parents and guardians to connect with agencies and businesses who provide activities throughout the year for students of all abilities. More than one hundred people showed up during a snowstorm for this event. In the area of lifelong learning, at Osseo Senior High School, scholars in the Health Science Magnet Program get hands-on, work-ready experience in the health science and medical fields. During Career and Technical Education Month in February, our district highlighted the various opportunities the Health Science Magnet Program provides. Andrew Claire's Health Science Curriculum Integration Coordinator said, "We are trying to give our students the opportunity to get a jump start in their health careers." As our Student School Board rep Priya mentioned earlier tonight, scholars that are enrolled in our Two Seventy-Nine online program gathered for their first in-person family celebration on March ninth to mark the end of trimester two. The gathering took place at Osseo Area Learning Center and featured several craft opportunities such as bookmark and bracelet-making, open gym time, and a movie night. Ollie the Otter, the school's mascot, made an appearance for hugs and high fives.
On March eighth, Park Center Senior High, in partnership with One2One, hosted the school's first in-person Historically Black College and Universities, or HBCU, College and Career Fair. More than eighty families talked with HBCU alumni and reps about their campuses, programs, and educational opportunities. Scholars at, scholars at Maple Grove Senior High recently attended the annual college fair. Sophomores and juniors had the opportunity to talk with representatives and learn about one hundred and eight local and national colleges, including technical colleges, community colleges, and state schools. Scholars at the Osseo Area Learning Center recently were able to experience a professional hip-hop artist in residence to earn elective credits. The District Two Seventy-Nine Foundation funded a grant for students to learn about the music industry, what's involved with being a musical entrepreneur, and how to utilize low-cost music equipment to create their own beats. The musical artist shared his lifelong musical entrepreneurship journey, taught students about songwriting and music creation, and encouraged students to pursue their own musical journeys. Nelsie Yang, who graduated from Park Center Senior High in two thousand thirteen, currently serves as the elected council member for the Saint, City of Saint Paul's Sixth Ward. She is the youngest and first-mong American woman to be elected to Saint Paul's City Council. She was recently featured in our first graduate spotlight. While at Park Center, Yang made deep and lasting relationships with her teachers, who she felt understood her and what she was going to do through them. She didn't just feel like a student, but like someone who her teachers cared about deeply for on a personal level and were invested in her success. Yang said, "My favorite part about what I do now is that I get to do what I love, which is being out in the community and helping people." Learn more about our first graduate spotlight on the district website. Scholars at Osseo Senior High School recently participated in a career panel with professionals in the information technology field. The panelists talked about their typical day, their favorite aspects of their jobs, what challenges they face, and what skills are useful for them to be successful in their positions. Three elementary schools across the district were recently visited by local authors. Scholars at Cedar Island Elementary School were visited by author Melanie Huzer-Hill. Hill talked with scholars in grades four star through second grade about her picture book, Around the Table That Grandad Built, and with scholars in grades third through fifth about her chapter book, Giant Pumpkin Suite. Hill grew up in Minnesota and went to school at the, in Osseo Area Schools after moving to the area in junior high. Scholars at Woodland Elementary School were visited by author Kyle Rowley to learn about his three-book series called Chronicles of the Unicorn Kingdom. Rowley made his trip to Jennifer Paulson's class, his third trip to Jennifer Paulson's classroom, and told students that they had served as his inspiration to keep writing. Art in many forms was on display at Palmer Lake Elementary School's recent Art, Authors, and Harmony Family Event on February twenty-eighth. Four authors shared their stories in short sessions, and the evening also featured dinner, many examples of scholar art and poetry on display, free books, and opportunities for attendees to create art.
Zane Wood Community School, a STEAM school, hosted its families for a waffle breakfast, where members of the school community could come together for waffles with all the fixings, conversations, resources, and more. During and after the breakfast, families could visit several booths to get more information about community resources, such as Hennepin County, the Hennepin County Library System, early childhood family education, family and community engagement, Create and PLS, and the Three Rivers, Three Rivers Park District, Gale Woods Farm. Kara Levin recently spent, uh, time in Osseo Area Schools to highlight the district's American Indian Education Program and our commitment to helping scholars understand Minnesota's indigenous roots. At Rice Lake Elementary School, scholars participate in indigenous storytelling with principal Diana Bagley. Bagley said, "We have kids with such diversity in school, in our school, that I wanna see them, I want them to see that everybody's culture matters." At Zane Wood Community School, Ellie Radai, the library media specialist, helped expand the school's native lessons using the flags in the library and books. Radai said, "The very first thing that I noticed when I got this job and came into our school library was the flags," and that they just kind of inspired my natural curiosity. Osseo Health Occupation Students of America, or HOSA, recently attended and completed, competed at the Metro Midwinter Competition. The competition took place virtually due to a e-learning day. The HOSA Midwinter Competition is an introduction and warm-up for the State Leadership Conference and competition in April. The scholars who took, uh, who placed top three in the state automatically qualify for the international competition in June. Congratulations to the scholars who placed in various categories, including Hasina Ahmed, who placed second in the healthy lifestyle category, and Cindy Walquist, who got third place in physical therapy, and third in emergency medical technician, with partner Owen Temperley, and Sage Berry, who placed third in sports medicine. In the area of mission-driven employees, earlier this winter, Education Minnesota released a list of a earlier this winter, Education Minnesota released a list of 131 candidates for the 2023 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Awards. That list has now shrunk considerably and now consists of 44 semifinalists, and two of them are educators from Osseo Area Schools. The district semifinalists include Lance Fredrickson from Oakview Elementary School and Jennifer Harrell from Maple Grove Middle School. Fredrickson said, "It's been overwhelming in a really lovely way. When I got to read the letters of the people praising my work and my interactions with their kids, to me, that's the word right there. My heart and soul that I poured into everything is what they saw." Congratulations to both of these teachers, and thank you for representing Osseo Area Schools. March 5th to the 11th marked the National School Board's Social Worker Week. At Osseo Area Schools, there are social workers at all building levels to help both general and special education scholars with academic and social and emotional needs. On our district website, we feature just a few of the hard-working social workers who give the district students the additional support they need to thrive. Sienna Isaacs and Jennifer Taylor and Heather Erickson are noted here. Thank you to the work of all our social workers for all that you do to support our scholars. Lauren Schmidt, an early childhood special education teacher at Willow Lane, early childhood special education, was recently named KS95's Teacher of the Week. Schmidt was recognized on air and presented with a plaque. A parent wrote in the nomination, "Miss Lauren is a wonderfully kind and welcoming and patient early childhood special education teacher. She's been instrumental in helping our son develop more language and more social skills and keeping us informed on how he's doing and what he enjoys while at school. We're very grateful to have Miss Lauren as our son's first teacher. She is so supportive and encouraging."
So lastly, board members, I just wanted to give you a couple additional updates. And one of those is yesterday I was able to attend the Minnesota School Boards Association and Minnesota Association of School Administrators Day at the Capitol to promote and support our district platform. And while there, I wanted to share a few of the key messages that I think are really important at this point in time in the process. It's a rapidly moving pace at the legislature right now. A couple of the key messages are the following. So while there are many really good policy ideas being discussed right now, the total cost of the ones existing as of a couple hours ago at least would cost our district about $25 million without additional funding. The governor's proposal for funding is about $17 million. So we're already $8 million short. So we're trying to help our legislators understand that, you know, any increases financially could really be going to some new policy implementation. And so that new funding that we may get from the state at this point in time would pay for, not even pay fully, for some of those new initiatives and policies and leaves no new money for contract negotiations with our employees and really providing that competitive compensation to show the fact that we value our employees and continue to invest in their amazing work. And like you heard earlier, recruit and retain. So we're hopeful that, and statewide actually, there was a survey with about 120 districts representing about 400,000 students, and that impacts those new policy requirements would be about $630 million, and the new revenue is about $100 million short of that. So we're trying to kind of help that message be through a conversation with our legislators and really help make sure we have sufficient funding to implement. Any of the new great ideas are being discussed so that we can also, we do what we can to treat our employees and continue that recruitment and retention that you heard about earlier tonight. So we'll continue that advocacy work. I think you're going to see daily adjustments, weekly adjustments, as we get closer to the end of May when we likely will see final bills being passed. So I think there's been a little bit of a lost understanding on the potential price tag for some new things, and we just want to make sure we have the funding to be able to implement those as well as being able to treat our employees the way they deserve to be treated as far as compensation and working conditions. So I'll continue to work with the board and our platform to share those messages. So then lastly, just a couple announcements. Just a reminder, everybody, in case they didn't know, spring breaks next week, March 27th through March 31st, and everyone's looking forward to that. We'll return to school on April 3rd. Kindergarten orientations are taking place at each elementary school through the spring. You can visit our websites for dates and additional information on that. So thank you for, well, and to my team here for the superintendent's report this evening, and that concludes tonight's presentation. So thank you.
Thank you Superintendent McIntyre. Our next agenda item is school board reports. Director Mitchell, do you have any reports?
Yeah, just a brief report. I've had the privilege to begin serving on the CPAC Committee, and we know there's a lot of different committees in our district, so this stands for Community Education Program Advisory Council. And I just was so impressed just with the quality of leadership from Brian Saberson Hall and Carrie Cobbey, and along with their true, just their passion for the students, children, adults, and community education. I also was pleased to see it's a really balanced committee. We have a lot of parents in the district that have either students currently in the district. We also have other parents on the committee that have graduates from the district, and this is what we want to see, more balanced committees. It's one of our desires. And a fun fact, one of the gentlemen that serves is a young man who has a student in the district now, and he also pointed up here, and he created this mission statement. He graduated from Osseo Senior High. So that was fun to see someone pouring back into the district and the community. And just one final thing, I know community education is piloting creative new summer curriculum for middle school summer enrichment, and I think those middle school kids are often kind of that overlooked age before they can get a job. So I'm excited to hear more about that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Director Brooks?
Well, Superintendent McIntyre took my update, which I'm not mad at. So of course, AMSD is heavily focused on all of the pieces of legislation that are moving through. And I know Superintendent McIntyre always sends out legislative updates. So keep an eye on those. It's basically the same thing. But one of the things that I found kind of fascinating in a recent meeting was a discussion regarding whether districts apart of AMSD have legislative action committees, legislative agendas, and/or lobbyists. And so every district was different. There was no same situation in any district. And it just kind of talked to the larger point of districts collectively working together, obviously to the best of our ability. There are some things that we may support as a board that other districts may not. Like I think we had universal free meals on our legislative platform. A lot of districts did not and actually opposed it. So just things like that. So looking at things like timeline, the process to recruit community members or staff to be a part of it, and then what that looks like to collectively work with AMSD to, you know, use our energy to push these things forward. So kind of just something to think about and talk about as we look at our Legislative Action Committee and what that looks like going forward. But that was kind of one thing that stuck out to me. Rise Committee meets tomorrow. That's all I have.
All right, Director Simons.
Yeah, so I have the District 279 Foundation report this time. So we covered a lot of financial information and processes, as well as the audit, which had a favorable audit opinion. And then I want to just talk about a couple items to inform you of the grants dispersments year-to-date. So so far this year, there's been 23 proposals that are funded. There's a budget of $45,000 in grants to classrooms across the district. So far, $34,823 has been dispersed, and there's an additional three proposals at about $4,500 that are being reviewed. So there's still opportunity to put grants in through May 31st to access those funds. And that's all made possible by the different events that are put on, by different donors and sponsors. And so that's really a valuable part of what the foundation helps to offer for our district. Secondly, investment in youth is coming up on Sunday, May 7th, 2023, and you actually have the little pamphlet here. And this is a really great opportunity for recognition in the district of students and staff. And we had a great time last year handing out, doing the recognitions and handing out the medals. So it was really fun. I hope the board can participate this year. It'd be great to have everybody participate. And right now, to date, the sponsorship to put the event on, the budget's $15,000, and pledges to date for sponsorships are $8,600. So there's still a big opportunity to sponsor. So those in the community who like to participate in that way, you can go online to the District 279 Foundation and submit a sponsorship, and that would be really beneficial for our students for that recognition.
Thanks, Director Simons. I also know that there's a couple of endowments where people have put 279 Foundation in their wills, so that's something to think about. It's in mine, but you won't get much. Anyway. All right, so my reports. I have two reports. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District met last Wednesday, and we went over the usual financial updates and the consent agenda, went over the strategic directions, and updated in that area. And so we're excited that a lot of the things that went away for COVID are now back up and fully functioning, and that there are more opportunities for staff development. We have a posting for the director position of Northwest Suburban Integration School District. So if you know someone that might be qualified, we are extending the posting to make sure that we have a good pool of people to interview. That's that report. And then my other report is DPAC with Director Douglas. We're on separate committees. I'm on the Student Services Committee. That's the District Parent Advisory Council. And so the Student Services Subcommittee solely concentrated at the last meeting on a presentation from a few different community organizations on school-based clinics. So that was my part.
Yes, so for DPAC, I was on a different committee, and I did attend the meeting, but I had recently had surgery, and I don't recall what happened at the meeting. But I do know that Rose Ton is excellent at taking notes. So at our next meeting, I'll give an update for both because she is phenomenal at keeping everything together. And Robin was there, and I just can't remember what we discussed. I'm really sorry.
But we have some amazing community, and we have amazing community members that are coming prepared to present in May now, right?
Yes. Oh yeah, that was the one change I remembered. Thank you. And then also, I was unable to attend the 287 board meeting because I also, again, I had surgery that week. So but what they did do is they accepted on the consent agenda the MDE Anti-Bias and Trauma-Informed Principles and Practices Training Support Grant. So we're pretty excited about that moving forward. And we actually have another meeting in two days. So I look forward to that and let you know how it comes out. And I believe Marcy Dowd, the superintendent, sent you all an update on last week's events in the district.
Perfect. Thank you. Director Gray, do you do have any reports?
Yeah, I do. And just as a part of being a part of AMSD, just a quick legislative update. Last week, Governor Walz did sign into law universal meals. That means free breakfast and lunch for all kids. It amounts to savings for families, especially if you have many kids. And it also means that kids can be in their schools, learning, without worrying about where their next meal comes from. I'm just really proud that that has moved so quickly through the Senate and through, onto the floor and to the governor's desk with bipartisan support. In addition, just a couple other things you might be interested in, some of the bills coming forward. There's a couple curriculum changes, perhaps. One would require Holocaust and genocide education in middle school and high school, and another one would require civics course as a requirement for graduation. So we'll see if those turn out becoming law, but those are a couple of things that are going on. Thanks.
Could I just add, also personally and professionally, based on Corey's and Thomas's reports, I've reached out to my legislators, encouraging them to really adhere to fully funding any new initiatives, and I would encourage anybody else to do the same if you're interested in doing that because it is absolutely vital to move forward with the new programs that we are fully funded.
Absolutely. We don't want any unintended consequences, I think is the bottom line on that one. All right, our next agenda item is a presentation on our Strategic Direction C initiatives, monitoring those. It'll be shared by Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement, and Robin Gonzalez, Director of Learning and Achievement. We get a duet tonight. And just a reminder to everyone listening that we had extensive discussion about this at the work session recently, so this is high overview.
Yes, I love overview. Thank you. I was going to lead with that. Thank you, Chair Muscata Jones, Vice Chair Simons, members of the board, Superintendent McIntyre, members of our community. We are here with our third Vision Card of the Year, and each of these vision cards this school year are establishing a baseline. So this is year one. So that is our first outcome for this evening. And then our second outcome is to demonstrate the alignment of our district's operational plan to the vision card data collection. This is a reminder, vision cards serve as a critical data point toward the realization of the desired daily experience. And then here is a look at Strategic Direction C, which says, "Promote inclusive participation of our communities and provide timely, relevant, and easily accessible communication." And you'll see here that in learning work initiatives, we have three initiatives, site communication tools, best practices, our Legislative Action Committee, and then the pilot and expand monthly family engagement experiences. And then over in implementation work, we have four initiatives here. Our district-wide communication plan is in year one. Our family and community engagement plan is in year two. Our radically investing in each and every scholar's excellence committee, the Rise Committee, is in year two, phase two. And then our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, American Indian Program Improvement Partnership, is also here in implementation work. This vision card has four indicators, family and community engagement, school-to-family communication, family-to-school communication, and then the perception of inclusive communication with our families. At this time, I'll hand it over to Robin to walk through our data.
Hopefully, I can manage it. It's always a challenge with new clicker. So I'm going to start with the slide that I've showed you many times, and that's really just to ground our understanding of the data that we're talking about in the vision cards is really that high-level satellite data. We really can use that to look at patterns and trends across our system, but not really make programming decisions because we need more details and more information in order to do that. In the monitoring report that you also have in your materials for this meeting, you will see that we have included some of the map data, so you can look a little bit more deeply at some of the patterns that we're seeing. But in order to make, you know, to find causes and to make those decisions on programming, we need to go all the way down to the street data by understanding the daily lived experience of our students, our scholars, our families, and our staff. Oh, it did come. All right, so the first metric, which is family and community engagement. And we started, the very top line is the percent of sites with representation on our district advisory committees and the radically investing in scholars excellence, the Rise Committee. Overall, 90% of sites were represented on at least one committee, and we know that it's not equal across our system. And so that is one thing that we are going to continue to work on is how to better advertise our advisory committees and find out how people would like to better be engaged in those committees because we know more perspectives are essential to make those really good decisions on those committees. Metrics two through five are measures of participation in events led by four teams on sites or sites. The family and community engagement phase, in collaboration with Rise, early childhood, Title I, and multilingual service team. The departments or sites included in this indicator were chosen because they are usually serving a higher portion of families and scholars who have been historically marginalized. The metrics are a measure of quantity and not quality of family engagement. And so that's one of the directions that one of our next steps is really to figure out ways that our families really want to be engaged and that what we're providing them with opportunities is matching what they believe is high-quality. The next indicator is C2, school-to-family communication. For this, we selected TAC. For this, we selected talking points and blackboard because they are both used across our system, but one thing to keep in mind is that it is, there is not a requirement or an expectation that sites use talking points to communicate. Through talking points, staff can send a message or an announcement to family members in English and it is automatically translated into the family's home language. And when family members reply, that is automatically translated back into English. For these measures, we are reporting on the number of messages and announcements sent by staff to families using talking points during the first trimester of each of the last three school years, and these counts are per student. Message and announcements both increased to more than three times as much from fall of 2020 to fall of 2021, and we know that that was probably due to the pandemic, and then returned to the baseline levels in the fall of 2022. We have three measures from our blackboard data from the first trimester of this year. Blackboard is used at the district and the school level to communicate with families through, via phone calls, emails, and text messages. The first measure is the overall percent of blackboard messages that were delivered, which is 84%, and our goal will be for 90%. The second measure is the percent of translated blackboard messages that were delivered, which is at 7%, and our goal will be at 90% to be consistent with the overall delivery rate. The third measure is the percent of all messages that were translated, which is currently 1%. The benchmark for the percent of message translated is 10% because that, this is the current percent of families requesting communication to be sent home in languages other than English. Not represented on this card are those daily actions that we know happen across our system where teachers and, and building administrators and building staff are communicating with families, and we don't have a metric to measure those communications. This is just an example of data going towards the map data that's included in the, in the monitoring report that you have. And as you can see, it goes a little bit deeper and talks about the number of phone calls, the number of email messages, the number of texts, along with the sites and the message purpose. Our third indicator is C3, which is school-to-family communication. And we, for school-to-camp, right, I'm sorry, for school-to-family communication, we chose again the black, we chose again blackboard and talking points. The first is talking points, messages sent from family members to staff during the first trimester of each school year. Like the school-to-family measures described on the last card, the measure is the number of messages sent per student. Family messages to staff increased each of the past three years. The second measure is the number of parent records in Schoology, the learning management system that is used at middle schools and high schools. Schoology is a digital platform and staff assigns work in Schoology and then students turn in their work, check their progress, send messages back and forth to the teacher to communicate, and also can be in conversations with other students in their classrooms. Parents and other family members can also view student assignments and progress. A data sample of parent records in Schoology was taken during the last two weeks of trimester one in each school year. Parent records during this period decreased from the fall of 2020 to fall of 21, but then increased again to the fall of 2022. CSA, which is the learning management system used in elementary schools, is not included in this data because there is not an expectation that stu, that teachers post classroom information or communicate through CSA. The third measure is the percent of parents using ParentView, and ParentView allows parents to check attendance, parents and families to check attendance, course grades, health records, high school credits, test scores, and other student data. The Information System Department began reporting ParentView use data in January of this year. The records for February were used for this report. The baseline level for this indicator is 86 and we are hoping to increase that. And the last indicator, which is C4, it only contains one metric at this time, the family stakeholder survey, which is inclusive communication with community scale. The survey was conducted in the spring of the 21-22 school year. A randomly, a random sampling of families with children enrolled in the district was used and 949 families responded. On this survey scale, 75% of the respondents selected often or always when considering the items within the scale. This next slide has the questions that were asked. So the scale was based on these six items listed on the table. The district overall percentages on the right include the two most positive responses, often and always for each item. The survey items with the highest rate of positive responses were communication from my scholar's school is provided in my preferred language at 94%, and my scholar's school communicates with me in my preferred method, and that was at 87%.
Thank you, Robin. Our next steps and lessons learned, we want to continue to be mindful as we select and sort data that it closely aligns with the strategic directions and our high priority initiatives. We want to continue to explore ways to collect community-specific information to better understand preferred engagement opportunities for our families. And then we also want to continue to humanize the data and include student and family voice. As we mentioned at the work session, we've, we found that, in this particular Vision Card, that the analytics available with the software tools that we have are quite limited in comparison to the other Vision Cards. And so we see this as a, as a perpetual work in progress for this particular, for this particular card. So that concludes our high-level overview of the, the more in-depth one from the work session. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, board members, or comments?
I would just comment that as a parent in the district, I, I don't hear or see a lot of communication via talking points. And so I would say maybe we need to dig into that a little bit more and figure out who's receiving it, how they're receiving it, or, or exactly how that is working. Because in my experience, CSA, ParentView, and Schoology are the only methods that are communicated to me personally throughout the years that my kids have been in the district. And that's typically what I hear from other families is frustrations over Schoology and ParentView and things like that, but not, nothing about talking points. So I would just, as, from a personal perspective, look into that.
Sure.
And I, I just wanna address that because you were not able to be there.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Right? So one of the things that we're working with, with IT is that one, kind of that one portal, and so it'll be a little easier to, for parents to communicate once that's all set up. So that was something that...
So, just a little background, Talking Points grew out of our urgent need to be able to communicate with families whose home language is other than English. And so during COVID, we invested in Talking Points with our MLL staff, and so it was, it was, it was one of the best-in-class at the time. And so it allowed us to, because of its ability to translate up to 100 different languages, we were able to, to utilize that, and it has the feature of being able to reply. So we, we not only have school-to-family, but then we get to have family-to-school. And so that allows us to track all the interactions with our families who, English is a second language.
Thank you.
Yep.
At the work session, I think one of the really valuable conversations was about kind of the concept of right tool for the right site and the right audience. And so we have a lot of choice in those tools and capabilities and what's the right balance of standards versus the flexibility. So with the goal of best meeting the need for, for the particular audience, but it was really good discussion, something I think we, in all things in the district wrestle with, how flexible to be and how standardized to be.
Well, and board members, I can add too that as, as you saw in Kay's report on our communication plan, we're constantly evaluating the tools and the targets and measures. This is a one piece of multiple measures in the district communication plan. So that's a good resource to go back and as our communications team is each year evaluating our, our hits on our targets, I think it was said well that we're, we're trying to get to a more universal tool when we can, but also meet the unique needs of so many different kinds of users in our district, right? So I think you can see that strategic approach in Kay's communications plan as, as we work at kind of those questions. So that's a really good one. I think we've heard that from time to time. And as Robin mentioned earlier, it's still an optional tool, we're not requiring its use. So I think depending on the building and the level of elementary, middle, and high school, it's used in different ways. And we're, we're constantly asking for feedback with our buildings and sites and families through, through these measures, see is it meeting the needs. So this is a good starting point from a baseline perspective on, on whether we stick with it, whether we make a change. So I appreciate Robin and the team kind of crosswalking with other departments like Kay's on, on some shared work. Just brings tighter alignment to our system, so. I hope I didn't steal your point again, Thomas.
You did. Yeah, I had the same thought as Director Simons. I think, you know, I'll speak for myself and I know there are others that are probably the same, like once I learn how to communicate one way, I stick with it. Like I still use Facebook even though to kids it's broke people, so. And I, I will not get on the other one, so. I think, just thinking about, you know, kids growing up and going from site to site, from elementary to middle to high, and having to constantly change learning model or communication models and tools is, can be a little frustrating. And I know people will eventually figure it out, but some sort of standardization and knowing what to expect would be helpful. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, and I know we talked about this a lot last week, so I'll keep it short. I know that we are looking at beefing up our communications and promotions of our advisory committees. And I think just one of the things to maybe keep in mind, I think, I think a lot of organizations are still kind of stuck in this traditional mode of housing, kind of traditional formal meetings at a specific site and expecting people to drop everything and show up. But if there's some way to offer some sort of engagement or feedback opportunity outside of those meetings where people don't have to take that time off, that may be more way, another way to reach more families. And just something to consider, if there are ways to participate on committees without having to commit so much time. But yeah, other than that, great report. Love the Vision Card, like I said last time. And then is there somewhere on the website where these are held, our Vision Cards?
Well, they need to be. So I think as we're working through this first draft, I think, well, to think of the best place, we'll work with Kay to make sure that those are easily findable to, right? Like not, you don't have to dig for it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I just, I also want to add that, I know that we talked about this, we want to gather data without putting extra work on the teachers, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, you know, because I discussed, I'm a teacher, right? I use CSA, I sometimes text, I sometimes... So if you counted how many interactions I have per pupil, it'd be way higher than that number, and we discussed that, so I just wanted to reiterate that you, you know, said to me that we all want to support not putting extra work on our teachers to gather this data.
Right.
Anything else? Thank you. Alright, our next agenda item is the Consent Agenda. There are several things on here, including financial support, reports, and several minutes from the special meetings of the Superintendent's Search. Are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as printed?
Same.
Moved by Heather Douglas, a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. No, Thomas Brooks. Let's do some. Okay. Alright, are there any questions, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. I vote aye. Alright. That was fun. Alright, now on to my favorite action item of the evening. Okay, well, I mean, I do appreciate the gifts at the end, but... Our first action item this evening is the approval of a contract by and between the Independent School District 279 Board and Dr. Kim Heil. Is there a motion to approve this contract?
Same.
All second.
Okay, moved by Thomas Brooks, second by Heather Douglas. Is there any discussion or questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I have received an enormous amount of positive feedback on our selection choice, so congratulations, board members and district. I think that we are very blessed to have Dr. Kim Heil coming to our district, so.
I want to say thank you to School Exec Connect for providing an awesome slate of candidates, and thank you to Dr. Kim Heil for applying and accepting the position. Anything else? With very happy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. The next agenda member is the, our gift to the district. Is there a motion to approve gifts to the district totaling $40,889.90? We couldn't just do a little bit more to make that round?
Mine's wrong.
One, one time I'm gonna donate just to make it round. Is there a motion to approve that?
Same.
Alright, motion by Heather Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tanya Simons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Did I ask for a discussion? Sorry, it's been a long day.
No, you didn't.
I didn't, but everybody, we say thank you. Motion passes six to zero. And Cory McIntyre has one item that he wants to talk about right now.
Yeah, so board members, tonight is Tim Paul-Montier's last board meeting in Osceary Schools, and I didn't want to let us miss the opportunity to acknowledge Tim and his work in the district. So I did want to just say a few things about Tim that I've learned over the years. I've worked with Tim in a number of districts prior to him being a general counsel and being one of five general councils in the state, it can be a lonely job. But I will say he's always kept the district's interest at heart, and I'm glad that the cabinet members can join because I think they would share, maybe you would all share a lot of the sentiments that I have for Tim. And first of all, just to say thank you to Tim for your years of service to Osceary Schools. We've been through quite a few things the last few years, and there's always a legal perspective, but I, there's a few things about Tim that I think all of us appreciate. And it starts with this, who he is as a person. You know, he's, Tim's such an approachable person, he's always willing to listen, right? Very humble. Like I don't know how many times I meet, he's like, "I'm just the attorney." I'm like, "Come on, man." Tim really does have this unique ability, even though the technical, not legal knowledge is there, he's always got kids at heart first, and our staff and our families, right? And I'm not sure that's something that can be always taught, especially in law school, right, Tim? Tim's in our buildings, he visits our schools, he knows what's happening in the classrooms, he's there in a way that most, I think, legal counsel positions or even other attorneys, he just does it in a different way. And I think it's just a real practical application of his knowledge. And one of the things I love about Tim, and I think the cabinet member's gonna attest to this, there's a whole lot of just-in-time need information, right? There's a situation that's happening right now, and especially to our schools, they can find Tim, he's always available and say, "I need a, I need help right in this moment." And he's really good at bringing calm and just rational support that helps give confidence to our leaders as they are in the middle of difficult decisions. I think he's done a great job communicating with all the different stakeholders. He's a, he's a department of one, right? And yet still works with so many of our different departments externally and internally and communicates well with each and every one of them. He's also able to, I think the other big advantage to the district of having a general counsel like Tim is seeing things coming, not always being in reaction mode, but anticipating, looking at what changes might come, getting... looking at what changes might come, getting out in front of those. You've all been through policy, most of you anyway, with either practical or policy committee meetings, trying to look ahead and foresee what could be happening and how to best position us to avoid potential legal challenges. And not everything's avoidable, but really proactively addressing those and anticipating those needs. So he'll be missed here. We've all seen and heard from many in and out of our organization about how he'll be missed here. And he's not completely going away. I think he's still, in essence, serving the district till the end of June, but this will be his, his last board meeting. And I wanted to give board members just a chance to, if you have any comments, please share those. I didn't give you a heads up I was going to do this because I didn't want to give it away either. So I know on behalf of the cabinet and myself, we're grateful to have worked with him professionally, but probably more so, we, we adore him personally. So Cheryl, turn it back to you if you want to facilitate any comments.
Absolutely. Does anyone want to add to that?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, so obviously was not prepared for this. But yeah, just, I guess, to something that Superintendent McIntyre said, you know, at least within my time on the board, which has been short, you haven't been just an attorney or just a general counsel. In many meetings, probably too many, you've been the most important man in the room. I think when the discussions have gotten pretty hot and heavy up here, we've all been pretty quick to turn to you in the heat of the moment for some sort of guidance or advice. And, and you know, like Superintendent McIntyre said, every single time, you consistently provided the information that we needed, just the right amount and always with calm. And so I, I just want to thank you for all of your work in the district. Thank you for always picking up the phone when I've had questions. And good luck with what's next.
I would just like to say, similarly, I truly appreciate how you have this incredible ability to let people be who they are and be calm and compassionate towards them. I recall several conversations calling you either in tears or very upset or frustrated or confused. And you just let me explain what I was experiencing and then calmly and rationally explained what was happening from your perspective and, and how to proceed. And I've seen you do that in so many different situations where you just have this just unbelievable ability to, to just be a calming presence in a difficult and tough situation. And that's not something that I think is taught. I think that's just who you are. And it's just a beautiful thing about you and I love it about you. I love that you can be a friend to anybody and you are friendly to everyone. I've, I haven't ever seen you say or do anything hurtful or rude or snarky or, or whatever. You're just this always great presence and I truly appreciate that about you.
I would definitely echo all of those statements. And I know when I got the call about this change, my heart just dropped. It was like, oh, no. But just for the, from onboarding us as board members, training us, answering the calls, helping us to navigate difficult situations, you're just so dependable and just always there for, for all of the different needs for everybody in our district. And it's been an honor to be able to work with you and to partner with you. And thank you for everything that you've done for our district and, and best of luck in your next position.
And Tim, I just want to say thank you. And I've had the shortest amount of time to get to work with you. So I didn't approve, we didn't approve of you leaving. Do we still have a say? I loved Corey, your summary was wonderful. I think in a short amount of time, it's, usually it takes time to get to know someone, but I've just seen your man of integrity, both professionally and just as a person, as a dad, as a husband. And I just appreciate, in the world today, it's so rare to have that quality. You're so fair, you're just, your fairness, so knowledgeable, just very respectful and very kind. So we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Tim is so well-loved here that I kind of feel like this should be a roast instead of compliments. It would be way more fun for everyone.
Cabinet meets once a week if you want to see.
Is that where the actions at? But Tim, just thank you for your steadfast commitment to protecting the district and its assets and most importantly, the students and teachers and really being mindful of looking at every complicated problem because there are a lot of complex problems here from multiple perspectives and really being able to, willing and eager to listen and learn at every point. And I really appreciate that and your guidance through learning to do policy in a policy committee. So best wishes to you and your next endeavor.
Yeah, Tim, I mean, come on. You called me and I swore for the first time in my classroom. The kids were not in there. It was, it was prep. I said, "Are you kidding me?" Fill in your own swear word. And I really thought he was kidding at first. I was hoping maybe that he was kidding at first. Tim, I'm going to call you my honorary Irish friend that we can, you know, snark at and joke together and do those roast-type of things. And I think we do that because we have a great admiration for each other. And I, I mean, I'm not going to speak for you, but I have great admiration for you and what you do and how you present yourself and how you... You know, I always talk about the heart of, of doing education. And for you as a lawyer to take that heart of education and be able to put it in something so technical as the law is truly a gift that I will cherish from my four years here. You can still stay, I think, if you want.
Nope.
I know, he's going. I really do wish you the best and I'm so glad that you are able to further your career and do the things that you, you know, want to do for your future. So just remember us.
Do I get a chance? I'm still deciding.
I'm chairing this meeting, so yes.
My mic's not live.
It is.
There it is, it's live. You know, I spent a long time in private practice before I came in-house. And there were a number of reasons as to why I left. I wasn't leaving anything. But coming to a school, being where the work is done, where the, you know, the priorities and, and everything that we do in private practice is to support the, the public schools that we represent. But when you're here and you get to be engaged in it and you get to work with the people that do the work, it's been so gratifying the last almost six years here being in Osseo. I'll start with the board. I have, I have always been surprised at various times by the compassion and willingness to, to come together sometimes against, you know, seemingly it seems like, how are we going to get, how are we going to land this plane? And I think the reason that that happens is not a mistake. When you realize that, that fundamentally, I think we all in this room share the same thing, we might share different ways of trying to get there. And, and sometimes that's the struggle, right? But I think this group has, most recently with the selection of Dr. Heil, I think that was a great moment for this board to come together. And that was, that was really gratifying to be here to see that, I think, Corey, you would agree with me on that. So I, I have a lot of respect for each and every one of you and it made it easy for me to, to engage with all of you. And then for, for cabinet, who I've spent so much time working with on a, on a day-to-day basis, I mean, it's, you, this is a tremendous group. Just, just fun. I mean, you got to enjoy your work, but also always really legitimately keeping kids at the center. So this has really been such a gratifying six, almost six years, I'm saying here, in Osseo, just working with, with this cabinet, with different iterations of this cabinet. It's been truly my honor, so I really, really appreciate that. And Corey, thank you for the opportunity as, as well to, first of all, to give you a mic. But, but for, for supporting me and at least in the work that I have done here. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Sheri and Marquita, who I love dearly, who are such important parts of this, this whole process. I, anyone who goes to a school knows when you walk into that building and you meet the, the assistant at the front desk, you know where this thing is operating from. You know the cog that the wheel turns around. And so I appreciate that from every, in every aspect here, really. I mean, that's, that's very much the case with, with YouTube. But everybody who's here, the custodians, the, the bus drivers, everyone who I've been a part of, it really makes this thing work. So, and, and I've been fortunate enough to be in a, I hope this continues, to be in a district where I can, I can be out in the buildings and I can be engaged. And that's truly been my honor, so I very much appreciate it. Kelly, I, I love you too. She's always been very respectful and, and great to work with, even, you know.
Talk about some good discussions.
Yes, exactly. So I just thank you for this opportunity. It's been, it's been a real honor.
Thank you, Chair. Muscata Jones.
Thank you so much.
At this time, the board will be taking a brief recess and then reconvene in the forum room for a closed session. The session will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D.04 for labor negotiations with all bargaining groups. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting for ten minutes and then reconvene in the forum room for a closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Thomas Brooks, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Sarah Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. This meeting is recessed at, what is that, seven thirty-five? And we'll meet in the forum room in ten minutes.
Me too.